We'll have one on Wednesday. So we're gonna, we're gonna, uh, cause Thursday and Friday, I'm at Bama-Bamington Provincial's on both days now. So the next one will be Wednesday after school, it'll start at 3:30, cause some people have their exam until 3:30, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll start it after that. Is it dead?
Oh, no, like, I think I'm doing like...
Oh wait.
I...
Should, the third button should work. That's good. It should, we'll, we'll switch that, and also pull down this one. To be that the buttons on that side aren't working. Looks good to take down one though. And good to test these. So we'll do different tests, we will use these calculators for a little bit to test them. And then, once we've tested that they work, we'll switch them around. Today, we're doing trigonometry. Oh, I started the video while playing with that calculator, so the video will start off with a moment of subjects.
We're gonna work on one of the exams.
Okay, if you wanna work on the exam while we're doing this, that is perfectly fine. So trigonometry, here are the formulas that we have. Length of arc, area of sector, some identities. Cosine and cosine law, here is the different area of a triangle question. No, your transformations and what the basic sine graph and cosine graph look like, that period is always two pi over your b-value for sine and cos, but only pi over your b-value for tan. So I don't know if you wanna make a note here, that this is for sine and cosine. For tan, for tangent, the period is pi over your b-value. And how to recognize the ambiguous case of the sine law. If the side opposite the angle is less than the adjacent side, you have a possibility of two triangles, one triangle, or zero triangles. Okay? This one, that says beware, is here because this one actually has zero triangles possible. Then with that, same idea as before, we will take about five minutes to do three questions, and then take five minutes to go over. So, show that four minus cos two theta plus five sine theta equals two sine squared theta plus five, sine theta plus three, so we can start with the left-hand side. You could change the cos two theta to one minus two sine squared theta. So now, why do we choose that one? Do you have three choices for the cos two alpha? But that's the only choice that only has sine. And since we wanna show that it equals something with only sine, that's why you choose that one. You're gonna have to distribute your negative, and then just combine like terms, then hence, solve this equation. While solving this equation equal to zero is the same as solving this equation equal to zero, which factors nicely. One value is from your unit circle, three pi over two. The other one, since the absolute value of that is bigger than one, it just would be not possible. Okay, question number two. Solve for this, again, if you have a double angle, you'll probably use your formula, and you change that to two sine x, cos x. In order to solve this, you're going to move the two cos x over to the other side and factor out a cos. The temptation on this, and did anyone do this? Divide by cos to get rid of it, okay? You're gonna be tempted to do that, and you will still get these answers right over here, exactly the same, okay? You will just miss out on those answers because if you divide everything by cos, you might be dividing everything by zero. So if you get, if you get the feeling like, oh, it'd be simpler if I divided, usually it's a better method to move everything over and factor instead of dividing. That way, you make sure you're not missing any answers. And question three. On the grid below, sketch the graph, so if we're sketching it. Okay, one thing I didn't have on my label here is, this is a calculator question. Label these points. Remember, if you're drawing a sketch and there is a restricted domain, label where your endpoints are. Okay? Solve the equation where it's equal to one, that would be solving where those two values are, since this is a calculator question. You would type y equals one into y2, and find out where the intersection is. Okay? You're also making sure that you're setting up your window so that you're only seeing what you're supposed to see. So set your window up from negative pi over three to pi over three. Other things that I would sketch on here, or that I would label, I would probably label my x-intercepts as well. So something to notice, something to always sort of consider at the end, lots of times that restrict your domain. So this time, a is between zero and pi over two. Given that cos a is one-third, this is telling you that it needs to be in quadrant one. So you can draw your triangle in quadrant one. Cause in a different quadrant, you'd be labeling your reference angle, this time, we are just labeling the actual angle. A squared plus b squared equals c squared, will give you the root eight. Now, to find cos of two alpha, you're gonna have to use one of the cos two alpha formulas. In this case, the two cos squared alpha minus one is probably the best formula because they gave you that cos of a was one-third. You didn't have to use the root eight, which there's a possibility you could've made a mistake when figuring it out. So that's why this is the best choice in this situation, but for sure, doesn't have to be. And then, given that sine of b is two-thirds, and they restrict the domain, you know that this is your reference angle for b. Finding cos of b then is just opposite, I mean adjacent over hypotenuse. And because it's in quadrant two, cos has to be negative. You know it's in quadrant two because they tell you right here that b is in between pi over two and pi. Question five. Straight line with equation y equals zero, of course, makes an acute angle theta with the x-axis. So if we draw this out, it actually makes a three, four, five triangle. Cause if it has a slope of three-quarters, that means it goes up three over four. You can label a point on there, write down the value of tan theta, while tan of theta is just opposite over adjacent, which is going to be that three-quarters. Find sine of two theta. You need to have two sine of theta, cos theta, and you can get both sine theta and cos theta from that triangle. Get twenty-four over twenty-five, and then cos two theta. Again, in this case, you could use any one of the formulas, and you get seven over twenty-five. So P is sine forty, Q is cos of one-hundred-and-ten degrees. Write down an expression for sine of one-hundred-and-forty. So here, you're going to use the fact that both forty and one-hundred-and-forty have the same reference angle. And so, they'll equal the same value, and because sine is also positive in quadrant two, it will still stay positive P. But when we figure out cos of seventy, it has the same reference angle as cos of one-hundred-and-ten. So the values are the same, but one-hundred-and-ten is in quadrant two, where cos is negative, seventy's in quadrant one, where cos is positive. So you would know that this Q value is negative, you'd have to multiply it by a negative to make it positive. Part b. Find an expression for cos of one-hundred-and-forty degrees. So you got a couple of options here. One, you could do sine squared plus cos squared equals one. And since you know already what sine squared is, it's P, then sine of one-forty is P, then this will be P squared. And you could solve for cos of one-forty by square rooting both sides. Option number two is you could've recognized one-forty as two times seventy degrees, and used a double angle formula for cos, and got two Q squared minus one. And then finally, tan of one-forty would be the same as sine of one-forty over cos of one-forty. Sine of one-forty is P, cos of one-forty was negative square root of one minus P squared. You could have it either like that, or use the two squared, Q squared minus one. So the fact that this question says in terms of P or Q is telling you that your answers are going to have P and/or Q in them. So the following diagram shows triangle ABC. Okay? AB is seven, BC is nine, and ABC is one-hundred-and-twenty. Find AC to C, this is your cosine law. And we get AC is approximately thirteen point nine. Some things to notice about triangles, um, that sometimes can be helpful. Did you know that in a triangle, the largest angle will always be opposite the largest side? So between angle A and angle C, angle C will be smaller than angle A because side, that side C is seven, which is the smallest. Okay? Find angle BAC. Well, this is your sine law. Sine of one-hundred-and-twenty over the thirteen point nine. And notice that even though I got thirteen point nine, rounded to three sig figs, put my approximation sign rounded correctly. I'm using all of the decimal places in my calculation as much as I can, so I can solve it. And again, once you get your final answer, you got your approximation sign. This is the proper notation for an angle, it's a little hat above the A. Question eight. AB is thirteen, AD is six point five. Let C be a point so that BC equals AC equals seven. Find the size of angle ACB. Okay? Again, in this triangle, you have seven, seven, and thirteen. That makes that a cosine law question. So you get one-hundred-and-thirty-six. Find the size of angle CAD. So because we know this is one-hundred-and-thirty-six, we can figure out this angle by subtracting it from one A, which gives us forty-four degrees. And, I'm gonna just label forty-three point six. It'd be forty-four if you use the rounded value, if you use the three sig figs in all of the decimal places, you get forty-three point five seven. So again, you'd want to use all of those decimal places as you go along. Okay? And I find that this is something the exam does a lot of. They have an ambiguous case question most likely built into, like, another question. Okay? So, how do you know if it's an ambiguous case? If the angle, if the side opposite the angle is less than the side adjacent, there's a possibility of two answers. So let's look at what. Okay, diagram's not drawn to scale. It's probably, yeah. So if we did this, okay? And we solved for ABC using our sine law, you get forty-eight degrees. It could also be in quadrant two, one-hundred-and-eighty minus forty-eight, which would be one-hundred-and-thirty-two degrees as another possibility for angle ADC right here. So this angle could either be there, or it could've possibly been like this, where it is one-hundred-and-thirty-two degrees, and this is still forty-three point six. In this situation that we have drawn right here, then the answer would be one-hundred-and-eighty minus the forty-three point six, minus the forty-seven, and you would get eighty-eight point five. If it was this triangle, the second triangle, then angle D, sorry, CAD would equal one-eighty minus the one-hundred-and-thirty-two, and then minus the forty-three point six would give you another angle, which is very small, and what does it look like? It's about four point four degrees. Okay? So, this question. I find the size of angle CAD. I'm just looking if there's anything in here that says there's only one answer for D. I don't think so. So then, most likely, they would be looking that you found both answers, if both answers are possible. Okay? Especially when they say diagram is not drawn to scale. It's a little bit mean cause they kinda make you think it is drawn somewhat to scale. So on this question, remember nine, the angle at C is obtuse. So they're telling us that it's bigger than ninety degrees. Eight feet, AC is five, BC is thirteen point six, and the area is twenty. So we have an area formula, one-half, the two sides, and the angle included. That tells you, solving for this sine of ACB is twenty over thirty-four. If you do the inverse, you get the reference angle of one-thirty-six. That means the actual angle is one-hundred-and-forty-four degrees because they tell us it's obtuse. But it was another, um, ambiguous case question kind of disguised. If it wasn't drawn to scale, there would be two triangles that would be possible. One, that's one-hundred-and-forty-four, and the other one with thirty-six degrees. And finding side AB, once you've got the one-hundred-and-forty-three, it becomes a cosine law question, and you get seventeen point nine. Does yours say QPR? Yes? Okay, good. All right. So, we've got our triangle PQR, the length of PQ is seven, PR is ten, and PQR is seventy-five. We wanna find this angle, what are we gonna use? We're gonna use the sine law, okay? Is this an ambiguous case? No. How do we know? Because the side opposite the angle is larger than the adjacent side. So there will only be one triangle possible here. So when we're finding QPR, we only get the one value. Now, let's say, and some teachers teach this, whenever you are, uh, solving for this, okay? First of all, you're solving for this side over here. And once you rearrange everything and are solving for it, you have two possibilities cause you will get sine of QRP equals some decimal place, zero point something. And there's a possibility it could be in quadrant one or quadrant two because sine is positive. So according to your caserole, so some teachers will teach, whenever you're solving sine, always find both answers. In this case though, when you find the one in quadrant two, one-hundred-and-eighty minus forty-two, you get one-hundred-and-thirty-eight. And if you tried to put in one-hundred-and-thirty-eight here, plus the seventy-five that is already there, you can see why that answer doesn't exist in this situation cause that triangle's more than one-hundred-and-eighty degrees. But, just be aware of that sine law ambiguous case coming up cause it does come up a fair bit. Okay? Now that we've figured out this angle, we can use the one-half AB sine C formula to find the area, and we get thirty-one. This one's at least nice, it tells you, find two possible values of the angle BAC. Okay? The area is four point five, so when you're solving it, you put it into your area formula, it has sine BAC. When you get sine BAC by itself, you get a positive value, it could be in quadrant one, or it could be in quadrant two. So we get two possible answers for this. Could I see them asking you to solve, solve all possible values of angle BAC? And then not telling you that there's just two? Right? Could it, would it be appropriate just to say, solve angle ABC and expect both answers? Yes, that would be meaner. Right? But, just to be aware of when there could be two answers. Period is always two pi over the b-value, so your period is pi. Sketch the curve from zero to two pi. And then, once the sketch is made, it just says, write down the number of solutions. Okay? Here, you can waste a lot of time if you don't read carefully. If you just worry, read solutions and try to solve this, it could take you a very long time. How many times does it intersect the graph? Four times, there will be four solutions. That's all you need to say. Ones of trigonometry here. So from negative five to fourteen, this is graph, what do we know? We know that the distance between the minimum and the maximum has a vertical distance of ten and a horizontal distance of four. That horizontal distance of four can get doubled to a distance of eight. So your period is going to be two pi divided by eight. That tells you your Q value is pi over four. Okay? Since we know that it goes from zero to, I mean, from negative three to seven, that's a distance of five. The middle line is going to be, uh, half of that distance of ten, sorry. And that's gonna be a distance of five, so you can go down five to get two, and that'll be your R value. And then, your P value is your amplitude, and it's either positive five or negative five. But since it's a cos graph, and it's starting at the minimum, without any shift, your P value is going to be negative five. The equation y equals k, which is a horizontal line, has exactly two solutions. There's only one place you can draw a horizontal line, and only hit the graph twice, and that's at the bottom, when k is equal to negative three. Okay, another one, same idea. Write down the value of P, P is gonna be related to the amplitude. The amplitude here is thirty. Calculate the value of Q. Since this is a period of pi over two, your Q value is two pi divided by your period. Two pi divided by pi over two, multiply by the reciprocal, and you get four. Formula for the depth in meters at a harbor is given by this situation. Find the value of Q, while Q is your amplitude. Okay? In this case, you are told that your maximum value right here is at fourteen point six, your minimum value at eight point two. If you, if you look at those two, and either find the distance, or find the midpoint, in this case, the midpoint is eleven point four. Then, eleven point four up to fourteen point six will be three point two. Did the question tell you, it didn't tell you three point two or anything? I'm just looking at mine, having scratched out things if I didn't know it. Oh, it's just that the Q, the P plus is at the front? And you're so used to having it at the back. Okay? Is it any different? No. Can it throw you off? Yes, so just, just sort of like, okay, does it matter where this is? That P value could be at the end. And then, that's your center line. For the, find the first time when the depth is ten meters, so you would draw your line at ten. Use your calculator, easiest way to find out where they intersect. Use symmetry of the graph to find the next time it's ten meters. So, using the symmetry, if you found three point eight six, I mean, they're never going to know that you didn't use symmetry if you used your calculator again. But three point eight six is... But three point eight six is, let's erase that, how far away from six? And then, whatever distance that is away from six, you could add that distance again on the other side. Okay, the other thing that could be used, right there, using, yeah, that's a key here. I said I could take twelve and minus three point eight six because that's the distance this way, so that'll be the distance that way as well. So you could either use the maximum or the minimum and symmetry to figure it out. Find the intervals when it's less than ten meters. So it's gonna be the three point eight six from here to here, and then also from here to here. So you'd have to figure out those values as well. Okay. If you got to this one, I'll put up the answer, but we will. End our trigonometry here, leaving the rest of these questions for you to try on your own.